Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Regular Meeting at Waterbury Arts Magnus School. This evening, we have a special memorial. Vice President Harvey.
Thank you. We lost two educators within a month's time. And the first one that we'd like to recognize is Mrs. Rosetta Hines. She launched her career teaching in the Business Department at Croft High School, where she taught typewriting. And then, she taught business courses such as keyboarding, bookkeeping, business law at Kennedy High School. She was then, she served as Acting Chairperson of the Business Department and also served, appointed Acting Vice President. She was also advisor for many years of the African-American Club at Crosby. In addition to that, excuse me, at Kennedy, you know, my, but at Kennedy. Yes, at Kennedy, she was very community-minded. So, this loss is not only for, you know, the education department, but also, the community feels this loss as well. So, we would ask that you keep her in your prayers. And just Monday, we received word of the passing of Annie Booker. Annie Booker, for those who do not know who she is, she is the sister of Cicero Booker Jr. And she was principal of Drake School. And this appointment made her the first female African-American assigned to be a principal in the city of Waterbury. So, we, her funeral, I believe, is scheduled for November 30th. So, I would hope there would be a pretty good turnout there. But please keep these educators in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Ruffin?
Yes, and our condolences to the families. We also would like to add our moment of silence for Margaret Peggy Richard. She is retired Willby High School Librarian, who has also died. And we recognize Louise Bollinger, who was the former Board of Education Commissioner. Also, in honor of our Senior Human Resource Generalist's mother has passed away, Lisa Dunn's mother has passed away, and we keep her in our thoughts and prayers, also, in our moment of silence.
Thank you. And just a note, as we celebrate Veterans' Day last Monday, let's keep all of our brave and heroic veterans who sacrificed so much for our country, and especially on the heels of the signing of the armistice that ended World War I 100 years ago. Commissioner Juanita Hernandez, please lead us in the prayer, I mean, in the pledge.
No problem. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone.
Commissioner Watt, Vice President Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Pagano.
Here.
Commissioner Soriano Adorno. Commissioner Stango.
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone.
Present.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone.
Present.
President Brown.
Present.
President Brown.
Thank you. A quorum is achieved.
Thank you.
Number four, Communications. Commissioner Sweeney.
Motion to approve communications is listed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Could I have a motion to go to number five, Public Address? Commissioner Van Stone?
Motion to suspend the regular order of business to hear from the public.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Manny Martinez and company, our wonderful Boy Scouts, are with us this evening.
Good evening. My name's Jay Lance. I represent the Boy Scouts of America for the Connecticut Rivers Council. And I'm here to actually make a brief presentation to Liz Brown as one of our influential women in scouting. The Scouts, if you're not aware, have a good reputation, a good relationship with the school board, with the school system, running scouting programs inside the schools, inside the elementary schools. And Liz Brown has been a significant part in helping make that happen and strengthen the program. About a week ago, we had a luncheon honoring 18 of the most influential women in scouting. Liz was unable to make that event, and so I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to recognize you publicly. I have a presentation in grateful recognition of your exceptional leadership and outstanding service in 2018.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Heather Shepherd. I am the STEM Executive for our STEM Scouts Program for the Connecticut Rivers Council. I met Ms. Tina about this past summer, and she heard about our program at Drake's Elementary School. And we met, and she just heard wonderful things and wanted to expand our program to across Waterbury. And for that, we are so grateful, because we believe that, you know, we're making a difference. We're encouraging young girls especially to be in our STEM program. And she saw the potential that we have, so, Ms., can you come up? Thank you. Cool.
And it's Tina Jacovino. Thank you, Tina. Tina, would you just come up and tell us your role in the school district and what your vision is? We really appreciate your innovation for our students.
This is where I like, oh. I oversee all the 21st Century and SDE after-school programs. And one of the big innovations for us is we're all STEAM-based. So, our program last year was running a STEM Scout Program at Drake School, which is what Heather was talking about. Everyone there raved about the program itself. And so, when I was looking at different programs that we could bring in that would incorporate a lot of the STEAM aspects that we need to, you know, qualify, you know, well, to just kind of run our programming, and to also give our teachers another option to use, she came in and we met, and they have numerous different options available for us, you know, STEM kits. And so, what we did was, we actually incorporated it, and we had looked at for every site. So, every one of our 21st Century and SDE programs this year will be running a STEM portion through Boy Scouts, through the STEM Scouts programming. And it is, it's a whole curriculum that comes with the kits. So, they will actually get, I think it's like, four months of programming right from that.
That's amazing.
And so, yeah, it was a big push that I was really glad we were able to get through. So, and thanks to Margaret Cherabini, wherever she is, because she was a big help with that as well, and Rocco, so.
Well, thank you very much. We look forward to great things.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, Cheryl Seeger. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, you are. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Cheryl Seeger, 64th Street in Nagatuck. I'm a behavior therapist at Wallace School. I apologize, I'm going to have to read this very quickly to get in under my five minutes. And my throat is kind of sore, so I don't sound as clear as I normally do. I watched the presentation that Ms. Baldwin gave to this board on November 1st, and there's a couple of points that I'd like to clarify, and another I'd like to comment on. Ms. Baldwin stated that the autism program employs five teachers. Currently, that number is only four. The high school has been without a certified teacher since the beginning of the school year. There is a very competent sub in there. My coworkers love her, think she's doing a fantastic job, they'd love to keep her, but she's not certified. So, we are running with four rather than five teachers in the program. As far as the number of BCBA's or Board Certified Behavior Analysts, the presentation said that there were three in the program. That's incorrect. There's only two that I know of. The one that we share among Wallace, Crosby, and Generali is not Board Certified. And she is very upfront about this, and, you know, will tell you herself, she is not Board Certified. So, that was a little misrepresentation there. I'd like to address the addition of certification for the RBT's. I know Commissioner Stango asked a little bit about that at your last meeting. It sounds great, but in reality, it's rather basic. And I'd like to note here that the board itself refers to this training once received as a credential rather than certification. According to the board, one need only have a minimum of a high school diploma, a criminal background check, and 40 hours of training, which can be done entirely online for a cost of $80 or less. After that, candidates must have their skills assessed by a BCBA and pass a 90-minute, 85-question exam. Ten of these questions, however, are not scored, as they are trial test questions. To maintain their credential, once they have attained it, BCBA's, I'm sorry, RBT's have to be supervised for 5% of the time that they are providing services, including two meetings a month with a BCBA. And this credential is a fairly recent development. The data I could find, the earliest data I could find was the first quarter of 2016, there were 693 exam candidates nationwide. And the latest data I can find, there were 11,874 candidates in the third quarter of 2018. So, this is a fairly recent development. Within the last couple of years, Waterbury did post advertising to hire their own RBT's. Naturally, the behavior therapists, me among them, became very concerned for our jobs. And Mr. Davis, who's the Board Certified Behavior Analyst that has been with our program for a long time, and I had a one-on-one conversation, and he told me that yes, Waterbury did want to replace us with RBT's, but through attrition. And at that time, I asked him, could we receive the training? Because I figured, well, it must be a good thing. I never got an answer, a direct answer, about whether we could have the training or not. So, I can only surmise that for us, the training would be superfluous. We're trained more than that. And now, I'd like to clear up a misconception about our salaries. I do have my W-2 here, if anybody cares to look at it. I've been with the program for over 10 years. Last year, I grossed $50,000, sorry, $677.10. Ms. Baldwin stated that we all make between $50,000 and $60,000. I'm in the mid-tier. There are two levels below me. None of those people make $50,000. I work with four other people in our classroom, none of them make $50,000. And that figure includes five weeks beyond the school year and four weeks of vacation. Because due to the nature of our program, we are not allowed to, I wouldn't say we're not allowed to, but we're strongly, strongly discouraged. I've never heard of anybody taking vacation during the school year, and it's understandable due to the needs of our program. So, you have to tack that onto our pay. So, that includes my vacation time. The last item I'd like to address is the audit team. I can't help but question the impartiality of this team, when at least two members of the team that I know of have either stated that Waterbury hopes to eliminate our positions and replace them with RBT's, or to basically dismantle the autism program and start anew. I would ask the board to please consider hiring an impartial board to conduct this audit. And ladies and gentlemen, I thank you very much for your time this evening. And would anyone like to see my W-2?
Not necessary. Thank you very much for your time. Is there anyone else from the public who would wish to speak this evening? Seeing none, let's return. Commissioner Van Stone?
Motion to return the regular order of business.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Dr. Ruffin?
Thank you, Commissioner. I am very pleased tonight to begin the superintendent's announcements with a very special team. And I would like to recognize our Principal of Kennedy High School, Mr. Rob Johnston, as well as our Coach of our winning volleyball team, Mr. Mike Stango. But very especially, I'd like to recognize all outstanding athletes that we have in our present this evening. The Kennedy High School Girls Volleyball Team are this year's MVL Nagatuck Valley League Champions. Their league standing was 14 to 1, with an overall 18 to 3. The Coach is Michael Stango. We extend our congratulations, but I'd like to ask the Principal and the Coach to please come forward, have the girls with you, and please introduce them, one at a time.
Thank you very much for having us. If I could just go down the row here, starting to the left over here. We have Ariana Padilla, sophomore Crystal Matos, Vivian Bunker, Susanna Magia, if I made a mistake on that, DeeDee Demerol, Maren Delaney, Hannah West, Tessie Tilly, Brittany Barton, Janelle Dejan, Julia Rusi, Avi Duro, Alexandra and Alejandra Roellas, and Victoria Soto.
Wow. Coach, would you like to share something very special in addition to this magnificent win about the girls and about your program?
Just, it's a tremendous group of young ladies. I think they embody the term student athlete. This is some of the finest students at Kennedy that they have to offer, both in the classroom, and then they proved to be champions on the court as well this season. And I couldn't be more proud of them, the effort they put in, the work they put in to come together, and just very proud. The nicest group of girls you'll ever come across. And if I was ever going to have a team win it, this is the group that you would like to have to it.
Wow, great. Principal?
Can you say something?
Johnston?
You first, Principal.
I can tell you that I would echo what Coach Stango has to say. These young ladies are great representatives of both Kennedy High School and the city of Waterbury, not only throughout the Nagatuck Valley League, but throughout the state. Coach is being modest, their 21 wins this year are a school record.
Yes.
And I tell you what, wins are nice, don't get me wrong. The girls just lost just this past weekend in the quarterfinals, and that's heartbreaking. They lost to a very good, two-time state champion team.
Next year.
But I tell you, the most disappointing thing wasn't the loss. From a principal's perspective, from a fan's perspective, was that I didn't get to see them play another game. Because to watch this team perform was really something special. They truly were a team. Contributions came from all of the girls you standing, you see standing before you. They're just a really special team, and I emphasize that term "team."
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much. Very proud. Commissioner Van Stone?
I am going to say something for you girls. A very good friend of mine had a daughter who played, and for the championship, you beat Seymour. Seymour, for those of you who don't know, they are, right, MVL volleyball. And you beat them. My very good friend, his daughter.
Are you still friends? No.
Yeah, we're still friends. Actually, I haven't talked to him since. But his daughter is Dani, Danielle Liska. Coach just went, oh! Okay? Who was all everything in softball and volleyball. Okay? So, I became aware of what Seymour is to volleyball. You beat them. You beat them for the championship. So, I know what you did. I saw you at the top of the stairs, and I said, "Congratulations." And you probably didn't know that I was aware of MVL volleyball, because unfortunately, maybe people aren't aware. But you beat Seymour. I get it. So, to rest my members, what they did is amazing. Okay? Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. You are MVL champs.
Yep.
And you beat Seymour. So, again, congratulations, girls.
And your Kennedy Eagles. Woo-hoo!
Well, that's from her. But, great job. We're so proud of you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. We really wanted to recognize you. Dr. Ruffin and I thought it was really important to recognize your beating Seymour. Thank you very much, and keep up the good work. You're a credit, and we're so proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out this evening. This is a really highlight for us. We also have some other wonderful news to celebrate. We are very proud that our English Language Arts Supervisor, Deena Mortensen, has been chosen this year's Commissioner's Literacy Leadership Award winner. I don't know if Deena is here with us tonight, but she was with us today during several of our professional development. She was honored last week at the 67th Annual Connecticut Reading Association Conference that was held in Cromwell. She achieved this award for her demonstrated leadership, passion for early reading excellence, and service to the school district. So, we are congratulating Deena also and sharing in that. Mr. Schwartz was able to attend the recognition. Yesterday, the Waterbury School Board and Connecticut Association of Boards of Education and the William Casper Grunston Memorial Foundation held a community conversation on the Portrait of a Graduate, especially as it relates to students of color. Highlighting a light dinner catered by the students at Powell, and a quick introduction to the topic, the participants broke up into groups and discussed what graduates of Waterbury Public Schools should know and be able to accomplish. It was a really excellent turnout, and we look forward to continuing those conversations over time. NBC 30 visited North End Middle School earlier today to interview technology education teacher Nicholas Napoli about the woodshop project he submitted to Donors Choice. The Donors Choice website allows public school teachers from throughout the United States to request funds for supplies or classroom experiences for their students. NBC Connecticut has been connecting viewers with local teachers on Donors Choice for the past two years, and chose to highlight the North End Middle School Teachers Project. The video will be highlighted in a future broadcast. The Title I District Parent Advisory Council is hosting a program this evening featuring our math supervisor, Janet Frenness. While parents are learning how they can help their children learn math more effectively, students will be participating in several fun math games and activities. Several service organizations will be presented to offer information as well. The event is being held today, November 14th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Gil Martin School. Due to the impending weather, Waterbury Careers Academy's Open House for Perspective Students that was originally scheduled for this Thursday, November 15th, has been rescheduled for Wednesday, November 28th, at 6:00 p.m. A training for school governance council members will be provided by the Waterbury Board of Education and Connecticut Association Boards of Education on Tuesday, November The snow date is November 28th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Crosby High School Media Center. With the snow day being on the 28th, we'll keep you posted. Light refreshments will be served, and childcare will be provided by Crosby High School students. This module will include the basics, what schools governance members need to know. It'll be provided by attorney Rebecca Adams from McCabe, and she will be the main presenter. We would also like to recognize tonight Ms. Jackie Davis, who is newly appointed as our Climate and Attendance Coordinator for Waterbury Public Schools, and we'd like for you to stand. She's been introduced a number of times today, and that wave has been consistent, and I really like that wave. Also, to encourage everyone to just stay tuned, we understand that there are, there's news that we may be getting some inclement weather either later tomorrow evening, and it may or may not affect us for Friday. We do have some protocols in place to notify everyone, and we will be very alert to what's happening, and we'll give advance notice as soon as we possibly can. While I'm not a proponent for closing schools, I do recognize that this is one day that regardless of the superintendent's choice, they're wrong. And so, I will be very vigilant in making the right decision on behalf of the children and for the safety of our employees as well. And we'll be paying attention tomorrow, and as soon as we know anything, follow us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter, decisions will be made. But if we do not have inclement weather, we are having business as usual.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Superintendent? Okay, thank you. I just want to, again, thank all the participants who came last night to our community conversation in the Portrait of a Graduate. And I also, special thanks to Vice President Harvey, and Commissioner Sweeney, and Commissioner Adorno, who were able to be with us last night. I think it was a great conversation, and people seemed excited, and I want to commit to the public that we are taking these comments and inputs very seriously, and they will become part of our strategic plan and our Portrait of a Graduate. So, again, thank you all for coming out, and we will not see you Thanksgiving, so, I want to wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, and have a wonderful celebration with your family and friends. Thank you. Okay, consent calendar. Would anybody like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Number 8.1, request approval of the Board of Education's 2019 meeting schedule. 8.2, request approval to apply for the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security School Security Competitive Grant Program. 8.3, request approval of the submission of the 2018-2020 Consolidated Two-Year Federal Grant Application. 8.4, request approval of an agreement with Connecticut Institute for the Blind Oak Hill. 8.5, request approval of an agreement with Hope Academy of Milford, Inc. 8.6, request approval of Amendment Number One to the agreement with Addlebrook, Inc. 8.7, request approval of an MOU with Relay Graduate School of Education to provide alternate route to certification for our staff. 8.8, request approval of the EDO 49F for the West Side Middle School Roof Project. 8.9, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. 8.10, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. Could I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. No items removed from the calendar. Number 10, Commissioner Sweeney.
Item 10.1, ladies and gentlemen.
Item 10.1, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy and Legislation recommends that the Waterbury Board of Education rescind the Board of Education policy entitled Medical Marijuana Standard Policy Number 4118.235.
Discussion, maybe you can just give us a brief explanation of the purpose of the
Corp Counsel has asked us to rescind the policy. They feel that Corp Counsel's opinion is that it conflicts with federal law, and they have asked us to rescind that. Attorney Webby is here. If anyone has any questions they would like to ask.
Good evening, Attorney Webby. Does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you. Although I'm okay with this, we put this in place because of a recommendation from CAAB, if I'm not mistaken, a couple of years ago. So as happy as I am, the reversal is why?
And I think Attorney Webby can explain. I think it's because the state changed its policy, so we were going to be in compliance with the state, but I believe we're not in compliance with city or federal.
Before, can I just walk through? We had a policy that related to student use of medical marijuana. The personnel policy was not a mandated policy. It was a policy that went in tandem with the student policy, and the committee at that time felt that they wanted to provide some protection for staff as well.
Okay. It's interesting, because federal policy is federal, well, not federal policy, federal law, is what federal law is. And we questioned that at the time when we put in place whatever it was, two, three years ago. Some, maybe some of my questions are rhetorical, but it's interesting, and I'm glad, because we were in a tough position a couple of years ago, and it was brought to us saying students who have been, say, prescribed, and how we would deal with it. So for you, attorney, and the board, so what is our position now, then, for students that are prescribed?
This doesn't apply to the students. This is strictly the personnel side.
Oh, it's more personnel, okay.
So if I may make a correction, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. Fortunately or unfortunately, I'm learning a great deal about the issue, as we all are. And as you know and have correctly stated, marijuana is a Schedule I controlled substance prohibited under federal law. There is no prescription for marijuana anywhere in the country. It is a certificate, and in other states throughout the country, there may be a written medical recommendation, but it is not a prescription. So here in Connecticut, there's no question about it, under Puma or Connecticut's palative use of medical marijuana, it is a certificate, and therefore, it cannot and is not recognized under federal law DOT regulations and other regulations to say, when you test or when you use marijuana, it's per a prescription. So slight correction. I've been corrected numerous times on it. I'm incredibly aware of it, so...
You're going to be our expert.
Well, yeah, I mean, again, like I said, it's been a learning experience and continues to be a learning experience. The city of Waterbury has revised its policy, consistent with the federal workplace policy concerning drug-free workplace. And in it, it requires that we make all reasonable efforts to have a drug-free workplace. So therefore, the city of Waterbury has updated its policy concerning a drug-free workplace, and in doing so, we noticed or were identified that the education policy may be in contradiction to it. So therefore, we are asking you respectfully to adopt and follow the city policy, so all city employees are following one policy, and we don't have different policies for different employees.
I appreciate that, because I truly remember, however many years ago, we were very caught in between. So I like the policy as we're now describing it, because I know our employees that governed the policy were uncomfortable with it. I guess it's under the heading of more to follow?
It could be. I think for all of the states across the country, there is some uncertainty. So I think all of us are looking to see what the federal guidelines will be and what the federal law will be, and what will happen with that. So I anticipate, as more and more states address the issue, including Connecticut, there may be a change.
Okay. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Because I was definitely confused when I saw this, and I wasn't at the policy meeting. So I guess I'm clearer, confused?
Well, hopefully, this policy clearly identifies, you know, what the employees' obligations are, rights and responsibility, and clearly informs an employee and prospective employee that what the city will be following federal law and what the city's obligations are under that. So that there should be, and there will be, education and training to all employees, and Human Resources has engaged in a process of training supervisors and communicating it, that there will be no confusion about it. That is our goal and our hope, is that the policy is understood and it's circulated.
So more to follow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm clearer.
That's all we can hope with him.
Yes. Thank you, Attorney Webby.
All right.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Next, Commissioner Sweeney, 10.2.
10.2, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy and Legislation recommends that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revised city of Waterbury's Drug and Alcohol Policy, Board of Education policy titled Drug-Free Workplace, number 4118.231 slash 4218.231.
Commissioner Sweeney?
This is the revision of the policy that Attorney Webby just spoke about, and we do have this existing policy. We are requesting that we accept and adopt the update from the city.
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next is superintendent's notification to the board.
Motion received and placed on file. Superintendent's notification to the board, item 11.1 through 11.8.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Number 12, unfinished business of preceding meeting. Seeing none. Number 13, other unfinished new and miscellaneous business. Vice President Harvey.
Yes, just quickly, I wanted to mention that, I'm trying to think of the number of students that we have that are currently on this HBCU tour that Granville Academy, headed by Judge Mosley, and HBCU is historically black college and university, tour that our students are on. And I just want to congratulate Granville Academy. They should be heading back shortly, and I just appreciate the cooperation of the high schools and those students that are in attendance. And I'm looking forward to a nice report from them on their tour. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Great. Sounds exciting. Any other business? There's no executive session, so could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving. Gobble, gobble.[1747.21]